Greetings, folks. I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee Meeting of the Marin Board of Directors and Special Meeting of Marin Water. Have a roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Director Ranji Kush, Director Larry Russell,
Here.
Director Matt Sampson,
Here.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt, and Chair Jed Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. And any public comment on the adoption of the agenda?
There are none.
Terrific. And a roll call on the motion, please.
Yes. Director Russell?
Aye.
Director Sampson?
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Aye. All right, terrific. We have a closed session of the Board and of Directors, and then we'll be reconvening. Is there any public comment on the closed session item?
There are none.
Okay, terrific. So we will convene to the Mount Tam Conference Room. I'll join via Zoom. And that's the scoop. We'll be reconvening shortly.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, you have a 699 page. It's not that. I know it's.
Terrific. The closed session adjourned at 9:22 a.m. Molly, did you want to report on any of the discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. We do need to report that we have a direction and approval from the Board to enter into a termination agreement and release that's final with the Pressure Grout Company for contract 2006. And we will be executing that termination agreement at the Board Direction. Thank you.
Terrific. Okay. Any public comment on non-agenda matters?
Yes, Mr. Jameson? Go ahead, Ms. Sir.
Yes, I'd like to offer some clarifications about the costs of our existing conservation programs. They do not cost the SWISSA number of only $1,800 per acre foot, not including customer costs. That number includes huge assumed savings from AMI, accounting for 44% of SWISSA's savings through 2045, at an assumed cost of only $287 an acre foot for AMI. Excluding AMI, the SWISSA average conservation cost, not including customer costs, is $3,000 an acre foot, about the same as 15 MGD D-Sell, but that almost entirely reflects low-cost turf conversions that are 83% of savings, at a district cost of about $2,000 an acre foot. The other 17% of assumed non-AMI water savings include costs of $14,000 per acre foot for the CAP program, not including customer costs, and including customer costs, $26,000 for the Laundry to Landscape Program, and about $29,000 for hot water recirculation, and $78,000 per acre foot for rain barrels. Under the correct new drought supply costing methodology, the existing conservation program's $3,000 per acre foot becomes about $19,000 per acre foot of drought supply, about twice the cost of 15 MGD D-Sell at $10,000 per acre foot. Not including customer costs, turf removal costs about $13,000 an acre foot, and the CAP program costs about $86,000 an acre foot. Including customer costs, laundry to landscape costs a sixth of a million dollars per acre foot, and rain barrels cost half a million dollars per acre foot under the new drought costing methodology, all compared to $10,000 per acre foot for 15 MGD D-Sell. The new way of costing drought supply alternatives is different, but is absolutely correct for comparing MMWD's drought supply alternatives. Of MMWD's existing programs, only the turf conversion, plume, pool cover, and irrigation controller programs make sense. The rest are a waste of staff time and ratepayers' money. Last year, only 123 mandatory graywater ordinance submissions were reviewed by district staff, with only 23 people actually installing systems, principally with laundry to landscape costing $26,000 per acre foot under the old costing basis. The 2016 graywater ordinance is a waste of staff time and ratepayers' money, and needs to be rescinded and not be replaced with an equally unsatisfactory clone as been proposed by district staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no further speakers.
Terrific. Thanks for all the math, Ed. Okay, we'll move on to the regular items in our agenda. And on A, we have approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please?
So moved. Second.
And I just want to make sure that you saw the minutes that was actually there. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep, saw they updated. And then any public comment on the minutes?
There are none.
On the roll call, please.
Yes. Director Kush? Director Russell?
Aye.
Director Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, terrific. Now move on to item 4B, and I believe Sean is going to present, and welcome, Monty.
Good morning, committee members. Sean Horn, Director of Watershed Resources, and I'm joined with Matt Circle, our Senior Park Ranger. We have a presentation on our fines and regulations for the watershed that we're going to bring up for you right now. Hold on. So the district has its land use regulations that allow for our park rangers to enforce and maintain the type of activity we'd like to see on the watershed. And under our Title IX Land Use Regulations, there's seven primary categories that these exist within. We have our general provisions, our visitor contact, our resource protection, vehicle and traffic regulations, domestic animal regulations, fishing regulations, and fire regulations. We're going to take a little bit of time to walk through what those are and make some recommendations today about some updates that we could make to support some of our watershed recreation planning activities that we've got going on, and some of the pilot programs and trial programs that we've been discussing recently. Just for some background, in 2017, the district did a comprehensive review of its fines and aligned those with the county's fine structure. And then more recently, and I think in 2022, the district updated some of our fire fines just due to some of the extreme risks of wildfire issues in California. And so today, this is the first time we've done kind of a deep dive into some of the regulations in relationship to visitor management and recreation, and that's what a lot of our recommendations today will be focused on. So for context, there's misdemeanors and infractions, and this is kind of important to understand that we only have about seven categories that are, we are allowed under the California Water Code to create misdemeanors to support, and those have a fine not to exceed $1,000. And then the infractions, there's a little bit more latitude in terms of what the district sets up to help us manage our watershed in terms of that. And the
But we also have the sheriffs, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And so there's public, Matt will get into this a little bit later. There's other things that, you know, if it's a serious offense, that can also come with other, you know, fines and, you know. So in reference to the Water Code, we are limited to what misdemeanors we can create. Those relate to fire hazards, intoxication, restricted lands, and the such. And so we understand kind of how these base fines, you know, align with the penalties that the courts charge and what the total fine ends up being. We just wanted to kind of take a moment to look at kind of what the regulations look like. The base fine is what we set as the district, and then there's additional surcharges that come from the courts, and then that all totals the total bail amount. So you just kind of have to keep both of those in mind as you think about the regulation fines, because sometimes $35 might not sound a lot like a lot for being in a closed area, but when you add the penalties that come with the court fees, you know, you do get up to something that's a bit more significant.
Sean, just one clarification. The Water Code Section 71660, this is a, this is an our Water Code. This is a state
State of California.
State of Calif, the law. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. So with that, I'm going to hand it to Matt Circle, and he's going to walk us through some of the recommendations that we've got based on Rangers' experience managing the watershed and supporting visitors out there. So we're going to walk through each of these sections that we have today and make some recommendations for discussion. And if there's other areas that you'd like us to focus on, we can look at those as well.
Good morning, Board. So we're looking at regulations we commonly enforce, or we get a lot of citizen complaints about, or also things related to protection of the water supply itself. So here you can see trespassing, which is states the watershed is open sunrise to sunset. Closed area, which if the watershed is closed, or we have portions of the watershed closed, it covers that. And failure to buy a permit, and that would be groups not at the daily parking permit, but on permitted events. So right now, the closed area is the same as all our other regulations. We're recommending an increase from $35 fine to a $50 fine to discourage closed area use. That's both nighttime use and people entering closed areas such as restoration sites. Additionally, we would like to increase the fine for swimming, boating, and camping, because all these impact watershed sanitation and protection of the water supply. Within games and activities, we're recommending an additional regulation to get us in line with the other land management agencies in Marin and prohibit drone use on the watershed. Our regulations currently are vague about that, and all the other land management agencies currently ban drone use without a permit. And we'd set that as probably the base fine that we use for most of our regulations. Moving on to the Resource Protection Code section, we're recommending an increase from $35 to a $100 base fine for water supply protection that pollute, possess, or impede water supply. And for the other regulations, such as protecting vegetation, wildlife, geological resources, archaeological or historic resources, or recreational resources, we're recommending an increase of fine from $35 to $50. With bicycle use, we're recommending the base fine go to $50, a second offense $150, and a third offense $250. And for the speed limit, and this is both for bikes and vehicles, $50 base fine for the first offense, $100 for the second offense, and $150 for the third offense. And we're also recommending the adoption of specific regulations about e-bike use with prohibiting non-class 1 e-bikes and also mislabeled e-bikes. And this has been a problem that some of the local police have been dealing with, with the teenagers on e-bikes. Some of the manufacturers are mislabeling their e-bikes, or people have put fake labels on their e-bikes to say it's a class 1 when in fact it's a class 2 or 3.
Maybe pause for a minute. So for the bike on prohibited trail, right, this is something that we have identified as something to discourage illegal use on non-system trails or hiking trails that might be adjacent to some of these pilot program trails that we're thinking about. So that's why we wanted to focus on updating these fines for this specific one. And then the e-bikes, we just needed to add some more supporting regulations to allow us to explore that trial period and then be able to regulate against the class 2 and 3. Thanks, Sean.
And then we're recommending a second offense fine for dog off-leash, and this gets us in line with Marin County Parks and Open Space. And for example, I was looking through our records today. There's one visitor we've dealt with. We cited her 10 times for dog off-leash. So we want to discourage repeat offenders, because the whole purpose of the fine is to discourage or prevent that activity by providing the fine and a disincentive to keep doing the violation. And then we
Sorry, Matt. On the person, you know, that you've cited 10 times, is that individual actually paying the fines?
Yes. They
And so they, you know, in addition to the base fine, you know, penalties, bail, so each time this individual is paying $158?
Or possibly more, because not listed in the bail schedule, the court also can impose other fees that even increase it a little bit more to $230 to about $275, but that's not considered part of the bail schedule. But this, we have visitors that, not many, but routinely get caught, and they pay the fines every time. So maybe disincentivize the repeat offense, because it will cost them more. And then we'd like to increase the fine for dogs swimming in the reservoir, because this, once again, aligns with protection of the water supply. And we're not suggesting any changes to the fishing regulations. And we are suggesting some increase in fines for some of the fire-related regulations. But the court dictates some of that. And finally, we're recommending a new chapter of our land use regulations that cover dams and spillways. And this would include defacing dams or spillways, trespassing on any dam or spillway, and using vessel board or flotation device in or traveling down a spillway. This is to address ongoing graffiti issues. And unfortunately, social media has created an issue where people, especially during the winter months, when the spillways are really ripping, teenagers going down the spillway on boogie boards and such. And
Matt, didn't we have someone get pretty seriously injured at Peters Dam recently for that?
Yes, last year. They were trying to roll a rock down the spillway, the old spillway at Peters Dam. And they slipped, and because it was so slippery and steep, they rolled all the way down to the bottom and received a pretty serious head injury. It could have very likely resulted in a fatality, but luckily it didn't. But we have ongoing issues with people entering the spillways for purposes that are not intended, and we'd like to be able to more effectively enforce rules around that.
Thank you. So for today, those are the recommendations that we're having in terms of the regulations and the fines being increased. However, for future consideration, we just wanted to flag that the district hasn't increased parking permit costs in a long time. And so that might be something that the Board would like to consider as we move forward with recreation planning. So these are just the costs so that you can have that as an update as well, that we currently charge for parking. It's $8 for the day. We could consider moving that up to 10, and then the such for vehicles and buses. And we wouldn't, we're not at this time proposing any adjustments to the annual parking passes that people might buy. And Matt can speak to this a little bit in terms of why we've had this trend, but we wanted to show you kind of, excuse me, some of the past patterns of parking citations on the watershed and the costs that people have incurred due to not paying for the daily parking passes. With that, we'll take any questions you might have or any thoughts on, in terms of the regulations and what we presented today.
Great. I'll let the Board members comment.
Sure, Jed. I'll take a quick swing at. So one, thank you very much for the review of this and for also focusing it on potential impacts from any changes we're making through pilots for the recreation feasibility study for that. Looking at the e-bike piece, when we saw non-class 1 e-bikes or a separate category of non- or improperly labeled class 1 e-bike, to me, that should be the same fine, I think. You're basically trying to do the same thing, right? A non-correctly labeled class 1 bike is a non-class 1 e-bike. So making those fines similar, I think, to me, makes sense, and it hopefully makes the Ranger's job a little bit easier, too, as we're, as we're going through that. And then, you know, one of the, one of the challenges I see all the time is, you know, when you put out the watershed report into the general manager's report monthly, one of the highest infractions is dogs off-leash. And so looking at a higher second fine potentially for that, we'll get that done. That seems to be an issue, and my guess is the reason for dogs off-leash is that the environmental damage is quite significant if you, if you do do that. So not increasing that more seems to, it doesn't seem like it would deter the issue. And if we're looking really to change behavior through this, I would support a higher second offense for the dogs off-leash, especially if we have habitual vote for that. It doesn't seem to be solving the problem there with that. But for that, that's what I have right now. Thank you.
And one approach to that, if you want, like the bikes being prohibited on trails, you know, there's 1, 2, and 3. We could just add a third step as well, just to have it continuously go up, so we're not drastically out of line with what other agencies might have in place, too.
If that's an option, maybe, maybe do add that third, but make it significantly higher. I would support that, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Sean and Matt. First, following up on the dogs off-leash. So, you know, we hear a lot of concerns about impacts of recreation on wildlife. I think sometimes we don't fully appreciate what a dog off-leash can do when it starts to chase wildlife. I had a really bad experience with this last week with my own dog. Fortunately, not on the watershed. It was on the street in front of our house, but our dog started chasing a deer, went into a creek, and it was a really bad scene. And it really impressed on me how, how significant this can be. So I would, I would agree with Matt that if we, you know, to have somebody doing this 10 times, you know, if we can, that, that just doesn't seem good. But I, you know, I also support the changes that you're making to increase the fees for, you know, illegal bike activity either on prohibited trails and for the electric bikes. But I don't see parallel changes so far horse violations. We're maintaining the $35 fee. And I don't see any fines for hiking on social trails or prohibited trails. So with respect to equity, I'm wondering if we should be looking at all of these together? Just, or I don't know, but equity is not the right word, but sort of, you know, standardizing the penalties.
So currently, unless it's posted as a closed area, there's no, it's not illegal to hike off-trail or on social trails. And hikers on social trails that are posted as closed would be covered by the increase of fine for the closed area violation. And that's where it would be consistent. It would be probably impractical to prohibit off-trail hiking, because the watershed is so large and there's so many trails. We have almost as many non-system trails as we have system trails. So we're trying to selectively deal with that with our project restore program.
The policy around being able to hike off-trail, I think, is something that we'll be reviewing as we start talking about what reimagining our roads and trails plan will be and how we might want to update any regulations around hiking as well. But I think right now, the closed area one is what we are thinking captures areas that we're trying to do project restore efforts in and where we posted it as closed.
That, that's, that's reasonable. What about horses in?
So in my nearly 30-year career, I've only cited one horseback rider for riding in a closed area. This was a repeat offender. He moved on to another county and ended up getting arrested for entering a state park during a closure due to fire damage. But horse use is probably less than 1% of our total usage. And only once in a while do we see signs of horses going into areas they're not supposed to be going into. So it's a pretty rare violation.
That's great. I mean, that's, that's good to hear, but I'm just wondering for consistency, you know, if we're going to find bikers a certain amount, shouldn't we be finding others for doing the same thing?
Yeah, and I think our review or our review of the regulations here were directed at where we're seeing offenses and not trying to make adjustments where we're not seeing offenses. I think where we are going to be focused on improving signage around horse use is going to be to help people appreciate that you're not allowed to ride a horse within 100 feet of a waterway. So that means some trails that folks have historically potentially been using horses on, we're going to enforce against that as we move into the pilot programs.
Let's keep going along the line here. So can you talk about the water supply pollute, possess, or impede fine? What is that? What is that? How often does it happen?
It's infrequent, but it does happen. We have caught one time somebody dumping material from a wet vacuum along the Linus Road near one of our reservoirs. We have caught, found evidence of people creating little diversionary dams for various purposes. And other activities could be cleaning a fish or even going to the bathroom near or next to the reservoir out of sight of a toilet.
Okay, thank you. I mean, those are all things we'd like to avoid. I think particularly, you know, anybody dumping, I mean, I hope that there's actually like some other, like if somebody's actually dumping pollution into one of our reservoirs, that there's a, that that maybe triggers some other higher level of penalty.
That case, we got them on misdemeanor charges.
Okay, thank you. Same thing with archaeological and historical resources. Can you speak to what that, what that means on our lands?
So we have a number of historical sites around the watershed, from old cabin sites to World War II era plane crash sites. And periodically, visitors, for all intensive purposes, you could call it loot those sites by taking old bottles or taking artifacts from these sites. And occasionally, Native American artifacts are found around the watershed. And we've had visitors take those, and then sometimes they turn them over. Look what I found. But that's to cover that, because these activities do occur. We can't be everywhere at once. And if we do catch somebody, we'd like to enhance the penalty for it. There's also state laws regarding that, but unless it's a really solid case for a misdemeanor, it would be unlikely the DA's office would file charges on it. So we want the ability to effectively enforce the regulation without having to go to the DA's office on a misdemeanor charge.
Gotcha. Okay. I mean, when it comes to archaeological and historical and cultural resources, I would support a higher fine. I just think those are things that we can't get back if they're, if they're damaged, lost, or stolen. You know, they're gone forever, and there's no mitigation for that. And so I, I, I'm more troubled by that than the $50. So I, but I don't, it doesn't need to be overly egregious, but I think commensurate with the impact it is to our watershed and to our resources, I think those are, those might warrant a higher fine. Everything else, I think, looks, looks good. I do think the, you know, the non-class 1 e-bike, you know, I think for people who just genuinely are making a mistake, that they don't understand that their bike is a class 2 bike, you know, that it's got pedals on it, I think that's a really big difference than what's basically an electric motorcycle. And so I don't know if there's a way to really draw a better distinction, because I think when you're riding around on an electric motorcycle, you're, you're basically riding a motorcycle. It just happens not to be gas-powered, and I think that it really does equate to a different kind of violation.
And a lot of that can also be addressed with officer discretion. We use a lot of that on the job, and we issue citations when we think it's warranted. If we think we can reach the visitor through education and informing them what the rules are, we will take that approach. And using e-bikes, for example, I would handle somebody on a basically what's for all intensive purposes, an electric motorcycle, far differently than somebody who has one of those e-bikes that they put their kids on, but it's technically not a class 1 e-bike, because even though letter of the law, they're the same violation. Spirit of the law, they're a very different thing, and they should be handled appropriately based on the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Well, basically, we're at your service here, Matt. So if you think these are adequate, I'm comfortable. However, it seems to me they're dramatically too low in general. I, I don't know if there's any limitation on what we can do. But we should surely, at the minimum, keep up with inflation. So it's been eight years since, or seven years since 2017. You know, we're talking about a 15% plus inflation of these numbers. We're barely making, we were making it, but it's barely there. So I don't know where the numbers properly lie. It's really up to you. As I say, if it works for what you need, then it's fine. Does the officer have any way of knowing the repeat violations other than remembering the person?
We maintain what we call our priors list, so every time somebody gets a We maintain what we call our priors list. So every time somebody gets a written warning or citation, they're entered into a database that the Rangers have access to. And we also learned to recognize some of the offenders and in a few cases, we're almost on a first name basis with them. But it would be nice to be able to discourage some of them from keep on doing the same activity.
Is that true with the dogs, too?
Yes.
It's, uh, it's interesting, the attitude of the people, you know, they sort of forget it's us, not them. But, um, yeah, like I say, we're here for you. So if it's doing your, what you need, I'm comfortable with where we are. It seems to me it could be a little more healthy, the fines. Uh, I think Monty's point is very well taken, the, the non-fixable, uh, events. And I would put the spillways in that category. I don't know what we have at the top of the spillways, whether they're, is there a fence or a cable or something at the top or anything to keep them?
It does vary from dam to dam. Um, all of them are posted with signs to keep out. And we've added recently no trespassing signs to some of the dams. But when there's a will of the way and people are going to find a way in, no matter what we do. But it would be nice to be able to enhance the violation or have a formal violation for that. And going back to the spillway activity, we've learned some of this through social media because of course they post videos of it. And that then encourages more people to follow up and try it themselves.
Do you think it would make sense to have video surveillance on these?
It probably wouldn't be worth the expense. We do have our game cameras. And if we were having a significant problem in the area, we would have the ability to move some of them around. And that we do have some that are cell enabled, so they send us alerts. And it'd probably be a much more affordable way to do that if we are having a significant problem than installing a video system. Because getting power to a lot of these areas could be problematic.
I don't know what, if anything, we did with the webpage after the accident with the person who tried to go down the spillway. But it seems to me we should be highlighting those kinds of events that what not to do. This can happen to you, you know, don't, don't, uh, is it very dangerous? Don't even think about it. Something like that.
Thanks. And I know we have a, an employee recognition, um, event for the staff coming up. And so we'll keep this moving. Um, no doubt, Matt, you and your team deserve a ton of recognition for being on the front lines for us. And, uh, I, I would imagine that, you know, enforcing these kinds of violations would probably be the least fun part of your job. But I also know that you do so much more for us in protecting this important land and watershed. Uh, I'd, I'd love to see, uh, you know, maybe when we do the approval of this at, at a follow-up meeting, um, some sort of reporting on the numbers of violations that we have of the different kinds of violations. So we can get a sense of the scale would be great. And I think we do regular reports, but it would be good to, to see that, um, in the future. Uh, I agree with, um, with Larry that, uh, that some of these seem quite low to me. And so as you reconsider, the ones that I would support reviewing and potentially increasing would be the e-bike violations, um, both for, you know, non-class one violations and potentially others, given the fact that we're about to, you know, extend some experiments. And, and I want to make sure that that enforcement is a really important part of our success of this next stage in that effort. Potentially going from 35 to either 60 or 75 for me would be appropriate. And same, I agree with Monte on the archaeological fines and issues and the spillway violations. So I support all of those. But I think that's all I have for comments and, uh, Sean and Matt, anything else before we wrap up?
No, thank you for the discussion. Um, we'll take that input and we'll make some updates to that item that we bring to the board. And we'll bring a review of kind of our annual fines. You can have some reference point for each of those. So we appreciate the discussion and we'll bring this to a future item.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, public comment on this item?
Yes, we have a couple so far. Larry Minnichus and then Bob Mittelstadt. Go ahead, Mr. Minnichus.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Matt and Sean. And, um, let me, let me just focus on prohibitive trails, uh, off-road biking. Right now it's a $35 fine and it's a big shrug of shoulders. And at a $50 fine as the base, I understand that the total is higher, but as the base, it's just going to be laughed off. It's like, who cares? And they're going to continue to do it. It's incredibly difficult for Rangers to actually catch someone. It can be very time consuming and you can spend a lot of time there and see no one, uh, even though they're getting complaints. Uh, the other point here, what would have been incredibly helpful would be, um, a comparison of other districts to understand how we compare to other districts in terms of fines. And I also say with prohibitive trails at $50, from personal experience, I can tell you I paid more for a San Rafael parking ticket than what this fine is suggesting. And I agree with Director Russell. I think they're modest would be a good way to put it at best. And, um, we're not taking really into account of inflation or anything else. And in a way it, to some of these people, it's going to be a joke. I'd really like to see us have meaning, meaningful, um, fines here. The last point is on parking fees, uh, that I would can, I would suggest speaking with the town of Ross again. And, um, coming back with parking, um, uh, fee at Raleigh Coffee Green. Because when there was a fee there, the weekends were much more, um, calm in terms of traffic. People actually, even though it's only $2, it's amazing what effect that had. And if any of you had been, have ever been there on a Saturday morning or Sunday morning, it can be ridiculous. Just a traffic jam of people trying to park. So that would be, um, the suggestion I would make there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Mittelstadt, please.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm just speaking as an individual, not for my membership, because I need to run this by them. And I say that in part because my initial reaction is to agree with Larry. Larry and I don't agree on a lot of things, but I think, I think, um, I think there's a lot to what he says about the size of the fines. I also agree with, uh, Director Kush that to the extent we can have a uniform fine across violations, I think that avoids putting the board in the position where it looks like you're judging what's worse. What kind of violation is it worse? Is it worse to have a dog swimming in a reservoir? Or a dog off leash or a bike on a trail or a hiker on a trail? So I think, I think higher fines and uniform fines across the, the board might be the way to go. But an important caveat, if I can, it's going to be important to get the regulations and the terminology right. Right now, the proposal is not to increase the fines for motor vehicles, 9.0401. But motor vehicles in your ordinance includes motorized bicycles and these, you know, illegal throttle bikes. And so, uh, unless you're going to have a new ordinance that addresses those, and maybe that's what's called the non-class one e-bike, I think it's important to keep that in mind. The other thing is, um, on the non-class one e-bikes, I would break that down and I would say exactly what we're talking about. If we're talking about class two, the ones labeled class two, but they're, um, motor vehicles or the class three, which are the cargo bikes. And we haven't talked much about the cargo bikes, the class three. But you see them around Phoenix Lake and Lagunitas Lake all the time. They're the ones that the parents use to take their kids on the back. We also see an increasing number of gravel bikes, which are really quite innocent. But they're technically class three bikes. So I think, I think some attention needs to be given to the new proposed ordinances, how they describe what categories we're talking about. And then to keep in mind the motor vehicle fine. I don't know why you wouldn't increase the fine for motorized vehicles from 35 to whatever. So I would, I would consider increasing fines uniformly across the board and then being very careful on the various kinds of, of electrical devices. Thank you.
Great. Um, I did forget to make one comment on the parking, which, uh, I'm a little resistant to increasing the existing parking, uh, numbers right now. You know, we want to be inclusive as possible here, but, um, there has been a first and a second multiple times from the board and support from the public to have QR codes for volunteer contributions to our trail maintenance and recreation activities. And I have yet to have, see the staff report on that in the last year, since it has been first and seconded twice. That might be a way to help, um, help us. And I'd love to have that as a follow-up. Okay. So now we are moving on. Thank you very much, Sean and team. Uh, I'd like to have a motion and a second to have this reviewed and referred to the board, uh, for the future with, given the direction that we have given.
So moved, sorry.
Okay, great. I think there was a second. I couldn't hear with the mic. Great. Okay. Moving on. Item 4C Brett Upandall, financial monthly update.
Morning directors. My name is Brett Upandall, District Finance Director. I'm going to pull up my presentation here. All right. Hopefully you can see that. Um, I do have two items this morning. The first one here is the more routine of the two. It is our monthly, uh, report. And at the risk of kind of being repetitive from the last few months, I will go through this pretty quickly. Happy to answer any questions. There's obviously much more information in the staff report and in the supporting schedules. Um, just cause it's a precursor to here, I think, you know, revenues and expenses both, in my opinion, have been remarkably steady the last three or four months. I think it's really been the same trend over and over and over again. We're starting to see little ticks, um, you know, in terms of, you know, spending a little more capital, getting those numbers up, you know, closer to the 90%, as you can see in the bottom, this is actually revenue. But rev, but water revenues in the top still are staying behind. Um, you can see 80% budget actual there at the top. You know, we'd expect to be closer to the 90s this time of the fiscal year. So as a reminder going into this, I know I say this each month, but this is on a two-month lag. And so we're still seeing, you know, performance or we're still seeing, you know, revenues, uh, that reflect the demand of April and maybe early May here. And so, uh, we will be expecting a big change, um, as we get into the summer months, um, and, and as we start closing out June and July. So, um, top line again, we're, you know, about where we've been the last three or four months, continuing the trend. This is the, the kind of bigger breakdown of each and every piece of our water revenues. Focusing on the left, they're the most volatile and variable, uh, water sales. Those are, um, you know, about 80, 78% it shows there at the bottom of our annual budget. We'd expect, um, you know, to be about 10% higher at this point. Um, you can kind of get an indication there on June. Budget, we're expecting to get around $10 million on a budget basis. We have not hit our budget the last three or four months or last six months or so. So, uh, this will be a big month in terms of, you know, um, rounding out our, our fiscal year end. But also remind the board, we do have some accounting accruals, um, that do happen in the month of July to kind of, uh, smooth out that, at the, uh, the June billing cycle that actually belongs in the prior fiscal year, but we don't get the revenues until July. So there will be some year-end adjustments we do to these numbers and I'm expecting them to be closer. But we're definitely going to be in a shortfall mode in terms of water sales revenue on the, on the year. The question will just be how much? Um, and I'll have a little more information on my next, uh, item, uh, regarding that. But we are overall, our fixed fees are coming in just as we expect and our capital maintenance fees. So overall water revenues are, um, like I said, as expected, and as has been, uh, the case the last few months. Looking forward to the summer, um, months as an indicator for how we finish the year. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, before you go, uh, can you go back to one slide? Yep. Can you, I, I, I'm, I'm sure this has been explained at some other point in time, but why did with water sales in terms of the budget? Why does the budget go up and down so dramatically month to month?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, the, the, the basic answer is that we have a different, um, volume of customers that we bill, right? There's two distinct tracks for each billing cycle. One of, one of the months is heavier in terms of just hitting more customers and more revenue, just based on the geographical locations. And so it just, it tends to be that way.
And then we, we, we can backwardly tease out actually how much was sold each month so that we, we actually.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, we definitely do that. I think that, as, as I've kind of mentioned a few times, the, the difficulty here in this first kind of, you know, spring and summer in the new rate structure is really kind of targeting that month to month and how the tiers, you know, really kind of kick in when they kick in. So, you know, I would point you back to, you know, September, October, um, of the beginning part of this year, when we kind of had that summer, you know, behavior going still. That's what I'd expect to see in terms of relation to the budget as we get into the June, July, August timeframe. So I think, you know, I think we've decelerated a little bit in the winter with, with, you know, a nice, you know, cool winter and, and rain filled winter. Um, and we're still seeing some pretty healthy conservation activities out there. So it's a good baseline to have, but we do need the summer in terms of revenues. We need the summer uptick to kind of fulfill what we expected in the, in the rate structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe just one other, uh, question on the, you know, as you know, I'm, I'm really, um, interested in how, uh, the overall revenue increases related, uh, from water sales, how they track according to what we had projected with our, uh, new rate structure. And I know we've always noted that it's difficult to fully understand that until we've had an entire 12 months of, of billing data in place. I can see that, um, from the previous slide, it looks like, you know, we're, in the same time last year, we're up from about 69 to 91, million in sales.
Yep.
About a 30% or so increase. And I know sales were probably quite depressed last year because we were coming out of that drought. But are you, are we starting to get a sense as to, you know, whether the impacts on of the rate structure on terms of, uh, revenues are kind of tracking with what we had anticipated? Or is it still too early to say?
Well, I think, um, that, as you noted here, the, the rate structure on this slide, you can see the, the effects of it is it's generating more revenue for the district, which is the point of it, right? And we're investing that into water supply. We're investing it into capital. We're investing that into, you know, becoming fully staffed as, as a agency. We also had to catch up to inflation and we're replenishing reserves. So we have a lot going on there. That's why we're making more money. In the sense of, um, you know, comparative to, to the budget and expectation, that's why I go to this slide is because you see water sales down there, you know, budget actual, you can, you can see those monthly trends really take a dip, December, January, February, March, right? In the seventies compared to what we'd expect each month. So that, that shows that kind of, you know, five to 10% lower overall usage that we would expect. And it also shows the power, you know, kind of the, the differentiation between the high tiers of the summer and kind of the more normal tiers of the, uh, of the winter use. So that's what I'm looking at. And I'm, I need to see how June comes in, how July comes in, and then how we kind of expect the budget to behave next year. And it really, if there's no other way to look at this, other than just to see how the summer comes in. I know I've said that a few months now, but you know, it's kind of been the same general data, you know, the last three or four months. And so, you know, now that we're finally into the hot months, we're finally into the, you know, the, the rain is for the most part stopped. And this will be, you know, this month we're currently in, and the next two will really tell us, you know, did the rate, you know, did the rate structure capture what we thought it would capture? And so I don't still have an answer for you yet. I'm just, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll get closer and closer with that as we get into July and August.
Thank you, Brett. I, I, I can see how challenging it is to have, to try to predict, you know, looking at, I know the different months, people have different cycles of bills and so on and so forth. That, that explains that complexity. I think one of the things that we, that as you get, um, your next round of numbers, it would be really, and as we have through the summer, excuse me. I'm really curious whether the rate structure has, it actually resulted in a, in a change in water consumption, particularly with some of our higher, uh, tier two and three customers. And I, so I wonder if, if as we go into whether the next meeting or the one after, if there's a way to look at, at change in use of those tier classes, to see if we can get a sense, you know, and then obviously the, you know, year to year, the weather is different. So there's, there's changes that we may be seeing because of weather patterns, not a price signal. But I think fundamentally, I think we've, we've wondered whether there's a price signal that's going to cause a change in, in usage, not, and, and may be counter to the rebound that we otherwise normally would expect. And I think that's part of teasing out the, the projection that would be helpful to look at.
Yeah, I fully agree. And I think that's, it's, it's very much of interest to me as well. Cause I think as we go into this, that's one of the biggest unknowns. It's, you know, the weather and then behavior, right? Those are the two things we can't control and two things we need to kind of look backwards to find the information on. So I'm looking forward to it.
Brett, falling in the same vein of decrease in water sales, you know, um, I get concerned about the watershed fee decreasing, you know, in concert with those decrease in sales. It would be interesting to see, um, what that fee would have brought in, should it have been, would it have been fixed? Potentially. And then the, how much we're, we don't get now, now that it's related to water use charge and then. and how we would make up for that because the watershed still needs the funding to be able to move forward.
Yeah, a really good question again. Um, so the watershed fee, as you're, as you're recalling, got changed from a fixed fee to a variable fee in this last year. Uh, we thought that was kind of more um in line with the cost of service and in line with the use to 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 really be kind of beyond that, you know, the more you use, um, the more you you pay basically without the the fixed fee burden of there. Um, you can see here that it's, it's, you know, even if we get our budget, if you kind of do some quick back of the napkin math there, we have four point three million this year in watershed revenues. If you get another six or seven hundred thousand, that'll put us right around five million. So we'll be a little bit short. We'll be a couple hundred thousand short. And so that's your point. It would be a lot closer if it was fixed. I think on the good news here is that we don't, uh, you know, we don't fund the watershed on a one-to-one basis through this fee. Um, it is dedicated uh to the watershed activities and we base the fee on that, but to the extent we don't make the revenues here, we backfill it with just regular water sales and we don't make any cuts right away. It's something we'll look at over the long term, maybe in the next rate cycle, next budget cycle, you know, do we need to make adjustments here? But we don't, there, there's, it's, it's no harm. It's it's a hold harmless is what we call it in the finance world to the finance, to the operations of the watershed. We'll continue to fund them fully.
No, I appreciate that. I just want to get into the Rob Peter to pay Paul part of this because those other funds are really imperative for all the big projects we're doing too. So thanks for that look.
All right, keep it going. Thank you.
Okay, so this is something we've seen again in the last few months. Um, and we're seeing that the slow and steady rebound, nothing dramatic yet. It's been, you know, kind of this, you know, again predictable uh within, you know, four to five percent of last year of a gain. So we are kind of coming back little by little, a little bit less than we would have expected this time last year, but uh, we're getting closer and closer to kind of that steady state um uh in in terms of the last couple of years averages, starting to get to see what the, with the customers and what our customer base is using on a on a kind of year-over-year basis. And we're right in that seventeen thousand, you know, close to eighteen thousand through eleven months of the year. Expenditures, and again, I've said the same thing in the last couple of months, we're really kind of just, you know, slow and steady as we go. Um, personal services, little by little, or or, you know, getting closer to the budget as we're hiring up. Um, we're getting closer to spending our our budget on maintenance operations as the summer months kick in. And then capital down there, um, I think we heard an update a few, a few meetings ago from Alex and his team. We're really starting, we're starting to eye up quite a few projects this summer that will come online and into next year. So for the two-year budget, we'll have a uh kind of a more, a higher expectation of using these funds in that second year than the first year. But again, these are all in line and into the extent that, you know, as we just talked about revenues lagging slightly, you know, this slight lag in operating expenses will also, you know, help kind of balance the books in the short term. Not something one over the long term, but in the short term, they balance each other pretty well. And again, I'll cover that a little bit more in my next item. So the summary is you through eleven months, we're being, you know, about eight percent below budget and revenues. Um, that is offset. Um, as you may recall, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about getting one-time COVID relief grant funds. We've also had, you know, better-than-expected interest earnings. So in in a lot of ways, our revenues are, you know, the shortfall from the rates is offset by these two one-time kind of to-the-good items. Um, expenses are both below budget. We're expecting kind of an increase as we process bills towards the end of the year here. And then water consumption, um, where we're, you know, slow and steady, having that rebound, we're about four percent above last year. But we're still about ten percent below our historical averages. And so those have been in kind of that same range the last few months. And again, we'll have more information over the summer as to how those um finally shake out. So that's the end of my report here for the monthly financial item. I'm happy to take any further questions.
Great. Any other board comments? Uh, very clear reporting from my perspective, Brett. I appreciate it and I appreciate the year-over-year view and a year-to-date perspective. So I am all good. Uh, on this item, any other uh public comments, Terry, on on this item?
Uh, yes, we do have one. Um, Mr. Ed Jamison. Go ahead, sir.
I think Director Schmidt may be on to something with this comment that the higher prices the board had the courage to implement last July may be resulting in a very effective conservation measure as customers adjust to their higher water bills each month. Thanks.
Thank you. There are enough further speakers.
Okay, great. Well, this is just for information only at this point, and we'll move on to item four D where Brett will remain and present again.
Um, yeah, let me share my screen here.
No worries. This is the mid, mid-cycle budget review.
So good morning again. Uh, this is a budget update. We call our mid-cycle budget review. Um, and so you know, I have a couple of slides here just to reorient us as to what the overall budget process is. Then I have a couple towards the end that they give kind of a an interim projection on where we're at and what to expect in the next uh couple of weeks and couple of months. Um, starting off with a bunch of numbers on this page, but just to kind of set the overall context are the the current year budget that we're in, we're about to close, right? Our fiscal year starts in July, ends in June. Uh, fiscal twenty-four has one month or a couple of days really remaining in it. Uh, we currently have a hundred and forty-two million if you count all um operating capital. You can see operating is about a hundred, you know, capital with the remainder there. Um, we also have a portion of our budget that is dedicated to increasing our reserves as we drew them down during the drought years. We are now building them back up. Um, as we get into uh the fiscal year twenty-five, so next year's budget beginning July first, uh, we, the board has already approved a a any, a planned increase there um for a total of a hundred and sixty-four million. That's a fifteen percent increase going into next year. And really, the the major changes there next year are our capital expenses. So we have a kind of a planned increase in capital expenses as well as a planned increase in our water um supply projects or or roadmap as we call it. And so it's really the two key drivers or other than just some minor inflation going in there. Uh, we have a two-year budget process here at the district. Um, and so we are kind of smack dab right in the middle of that. Um, and as our practice to have a mid-cycle budget review, uh, where finance uh kind of does a scan of where we're at. Uh, the the way that I kind of interpret this is it's it's me kind of reporting out to the board, letting you know, do we have any major changes coming? Do we need any, do we need to request any budget adjustments? Is there anything with our either revenues or expenses that we need to kind of work on in the mid, in the mid, in the interim? Because we don't want to go two full years without making course corrections. So we're kind of in this, you know, good midpoint. Uh, I'll have updated projections for revenues and expenses, but to kind of cut to the chase, I think we're in a pretty good place and there's nothing major right now that we need to have immediate action on. A lot of things for us to work on and have our eyes open for, but no, no major action that we'll be asking for today. Here's kind of a process map for how we do our two-year budget process. Um, so we're again, we're right smack in the middle of that. Um, early summer, we'll do the mid-cycle update here. If we needed to make any year-end um budget adjustments or adjustments going to next year, we would do that now. Again, we're not going to be asking for that. Uh, in the late summer and early fall, the kind of next box over to the right, um, we'll finalize our year-end audit with the external auditors. Uh, we'll do our internal analysis. Um, we'll kind of update our kind of our financial plan, our longer-term financial plan. And then that'll help inform the budget instructions that we give to the district um closer to late fall at that point. And then in the winter and spring, we'll meet with all the divisions. Um, we'll kind of gather, you know, perspective, their perspective from what they're seeing, um, expenses and revenues, but mostly expenses. Uh, we'll hold budget planning workshops with the board, um, as well as with the public. And then we'll develop a proposed two-year budget, um, that will cover fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven. And that'll come out to the board likely in April or May, um, about a year from now. So that's kind of the long cycle. Um, we'll be doing a lot of work again this this summer and fall to to kind of set the stage for that and we'll be reporting out along the way. Um, our bu- budget goals here for the two-year process have remained unchanged. And I mentioned these at the, at the very beginning, but it really is to strengthen our water supply reliability, um, to build upon our wildfire resiliency and and efforts on the mountain watershed, keep pace with inflation and infrastructure and to replenish our reserves. So we're not recommending any changes to these goals. I think they still fit well with the two-year budget. Um, all the numbers I had mentioned to you before are kind of in bullet points. This is them here kind of all together. If you take a two-year look at the budget, again, we have that fifteen percent expected increase into next year's budget. Uh, if if you kind of look down at the expenses by category, you see the big drivers there are capital enhancements towards the bottom, you know, nearly doubling our our capital enhancements and our water supply projects, really tripling our funding for that. So that was part of this kind of planned ramp up as we got into last summer. We knew we wanted to phase into this and really start hitting the ground hard this year and next year. And so you'll see that in the second year of the budget. And then the very bottom there, you see, we still have a steady five million per year increase to our reserves. Uh, and then if you look at our our revenues, how we get there, um, you'll see that our fixed fees, our service charge and our capital maintenance fee are only increasing by five percent in terms of overall revenue next year, same with the watershed management fee. So this is part of the planned rate structure, the 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 biggest part of the revenue um picture will come on water sales in in terms of rate, rate impacts. And again, as a reminder, that, you know, creates a little bit more volatility. Our fixed fees are increasing slower than our, you know, variable fees. So it'll become even more, you know, yeah, more important to understand our customer behavior and our revenue streams as we get into next year, as we become more reliant on variable um revenue streams here. Couple graphical charts, if that works easier for you to kind of see where we're spending our money. Um, this one exactly.
Sorry, Brett, just on the last slide, I missed the point on this um balance that we're, you know, we'll have between our water sales versus our fixed fees. In the rate structure, is that actually still adjusting as we go into our next budget cycle, our next budget year?
Yeah, so it it's part of the rate structure that we, the the board approved last year. We had a four-year, you know, cycle to right, four years of rates. We had, the first year was really kind of a reset with the tiers and a reset with kind of the the cost of service and the alignment. And the next years was really just aligning, you know, how do we continue to increase our investments in um capital over the four years and maintain space with inflation? And I think we took the stance that we wanted to, once we reset the overall structure, uh, we wanted to make the fixed fees, you know, really kind of, you know, commensurate with normal inflation so that the folks that that are not using the water are kind of have a predictable uh and kind of steady increase to their fees, whereas water sales continues to bear the brunt of that. And that was part of the overall kind of shift that we had from, you know, what, stepping little by little away from our variable fee structure and our kind of, you know, in hi- actually, we had a more higher fixed fee, sorry. We had higher fixed fee structure um going into this. And that was one of the kind of principles that we went into the rate structure with is how do we start to shift that balance to lower the burden on fixed fees uh for our customers and really kind of make it more proportional by making the water sales, you know, be a higher proportion of the overall rates.
Yeah, no, no, that that part I get. I was just, that that, that um, the ratio of uh, you know, as we go into the our next um fiscal year, are the fixed fees going to continue to drop? I guess that's, that that was the question.
The fixed fees as a portion of the overall revenues will drop.
Will drop.
So I think, you know, each year, we're little by little readjusting that. So the 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 fixed fees don't go down, but as a portion of the overall bill or a portion of our revenue, they don't grow as fast.
Thanks, Brett.
Yeah. All right. So this is again a graphical kind of look at our our budget. This is expense budget going into the next year. Um, the one thing I would say here that caught me, you know, a little bit, um, I don't want to say by surprise, but is a little bit out of, out of whack for what I'm typically see is that personnel charges down there are only thirty-three percent of our budget. They're typically closer to fifty, and that is because we're spending so much more on capital projects. I think it reflects the board's investments in in capital um and in water supply resiliency. So if you kind of, if you think of yourself debt services for capital projects, so is capital projects and so is water supply. That starts to put our our district's overall investment, you know, closer to forty percent on the capital side, which is really healthy and and much needed. Uh, and as as, you know, as we're keeping pretty flat with personnel, that just becomes a lower, lower percent of our overall budget. So again, not not surprised necessarily if we were looking into the numbers super close last year, but, you know, putting them into this chart, it's become one of the lower personnel percentages I've seen in a while, just reflecting our uh investments in capital.
And does that personnel number reflect full staffing or anticipated full staffing?
Yes, it does. It does, yeah.
Looking at this in um, as, you know, lately, when we're seeing numbers from some of these big water supply projects, I wonder if there's an opportunity, if we've realized savings in one of these categories through whatever the case may be, to be able to augment something else that would help us build more strength fiscally for some of these bigger projects now that they're coming in a little bit higher than anticipated.
So the general answer to that is yes. So, you know, all the savings from these categories essentially becomes our reserves at the end of the year, right? To the extent the revenues came in, uh, your board may recall that we adopted a new reserve policy. We created a couple of different buckets, um, one of which was water supply resiliency projects and the capital reserve as well. So I think uh my expectation would be as we finish the year and we kind of finalize our analysis on revenues, expenses both, we would come back to the board and report out for, you know, where the reserve changes would be or or recommended changes of those. And that would be a time when you can kind of see, you know, do we need to put some more aside for some of the water supply projects or anything else that may come up as a priority? Uh, revenues here, again, as I've been talking about, um, in the last few slides, and water sales becomes a, you know, larger and larger proportion of our revenues. Now we're over sixty percent in in terms of our variable um revenues there. Again, expected part of the plan, uh, but it's just kind of interesting to see here as the, as the charts get bigger. So I'm going to transition now into budget issues. So that would, all that was just kind of context building and kind of reminding where we're at in terms of the overall budget. These are the things that that me and my staff are really looking into because they're the the things that have changed in the last, you know, year or so, the things that are, you know, out outside of our expectations. So and then these are also some of the biggest items in our budget. So they're, they make a difference to the bottom line. Um, on the top, there are Sonoma, Sonoma Water purchases. Uh, Sonoma Water recently increased their rates a little over ten percent. Um, and we had assumed about an eight and a half percent, you know, kind of steady increase each year. So uh, that will impact our bottom line. Um, again, it, this is one of those ones where how much we use will impact it more, but it, you know, given constant usage, this this does become an expenditure pressure for us. Um, and just in in overall kind of, you know, general terms, our Sonoma Water budget's about ten million a year. So about, you know, ten percent of our operating budget. And so this becomes a relatively big number if you, if it gets, you know, much, you know, much. If we have too many more years of this, you know, being outside of our expectations, it becomes a big expense. Utilities, I think we all know about the PG&E rate increases, you know, our our increases are right around twenty percent since they implemented those mid-year uh compared to about a five percent expectation. I I looked into some of the, you know, larger macroeconomic stats on this too. And I think nationally, they're seeing, you know, five, six, seven percent on on electricity and gas where California and San Francisco in general is in the high twenties or the the mid twenties, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. So certainly, you know, I think we are the biggest customer of electricity here in Marin. We rely on it quite a bit. It's about a five million dollar line item. So to have that big of an increase from PG&E is is again, a big number to absorb. Um, especially, you know, in terms of if this happens year over year, you know, one-time increase we can handle, but the year-over-year is what we'll be looking at for the next budget cycle. Personnel expenses. Um, so healthcare is the one I'm looking at mostly here. Uh, we, I think we saw Kaiser rates increase around ten or eleven percent last year. We were expecting, you know, something mid-single digits. Uh, really what's happening here and and not, I don't want to go too far into it, but when we, when we take these healthcare trends and we expand them out, you know, into the retiree sector, where we pay for our retirees' healthcare as well. The actuaries come back and they say, well, if it's going to be two or three or four percent more in this year and in most years going forward, they're recalculating that in terms of what we have to contribute to our uh retiree healthcare trust. And that will be a pretty big number in a couple of years. So I'll show, I'll show you what that's going to be in a couple of slides, but you know, the actuaries have adopted a new schedule for kind of the thirty-year expectations of of healthcare kind of inflation. And it's much higher than the prior schedule was. So that's going to affect not only us, obviously, but every public agency and everybody uses these actuaries to kind of help guide your investments over the long term. So not as much of a short-term problem here, but more of a longer term, as I'll show you in a slide or two. Um, capital program staffing, I think we've talked about that a few times to the board. We need to add a couple um, cost-covered additions to our staffing model in the capital group to make sure we can deliver the projects that are, they're coming our way. Uh, Alex has done a good job of that of finding kind of adds and deletes where we can. And we're, we'll look into the kind of funding ratio and find out if we can add a couple more um staff within the current budget to help um complete those projects. Uh, regulatory-wise, uh, you know, we're, one of the bigger ones we're facing is the electrical vehicle fleet requirements, the state requirements. They took effect this year in twenty twenty-four, where um about fifty percent of new purchases for public fleets have to be electric vehicles. In twenty twenty-six, that'll be a hundred percent of purchases need to be electric vehicles. So um I'll be working with uh Darren and with the operations staff to find out, you know, where we're at in that schedule, how much that changes our, you know, future models. If there's any rebates or grants, we can use to offset that burden. Um, and if we have the infrastructure to be able to kind of maintain that as we turn over our fleets. Because we can grandfather our old stuff in, but we'll need to start planning for the future in in this next budget cycle and certainly into the next rate cycle. So more, more to come there. And then finally, revenues, um, interest earnings, as I've mentioned a few times, and that COVID relief grant have offset the the rate rev- revenue shortfalls in the short term. But long-term, we can't expect interest earnings or any kind of one-time grants to help us out there. So we'll have to take a closer look at at the revenues as we get into next year and the next budget cycle.
Do you know how we fit in in terms of fleet? Are we the largest fleet? Or the county's probably bigger than us?
The county is definitely bigger than us.
Or the sheriffs are bigger than us.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you take, I mean, in terms of overall size and impact, you see the county, um, you know, city of Nevada, city of San Rafael will all be, you know, probably a little bit bigger because they got fire and sheriff and all the, you know, public works and whatnot. But we'll be right there, right behind that.
The reason I asked is that um I have a large trucking client in San Diego who is in the process of converting their fleet over to electric. The county of San Diego is paying for it, or at least a good chunk of it. Um, I don't know if Marin has thought about that. I mean, I think these are like, I think the county's chunking in around a hundred K per vehicle. So, um.
Well, I know there's many, there's many agencies, you know, our county and or the state agencies or regional air quality agencies that have incentive programs and they are pushing, you know, for the climate change of aspect just as much as the state is. So we will be looking into grants and any kind of incentives and tax rebates that we can get. I haven't heard specifically if the county, you know, of Marin is supporting that or not, but I know there are, you know.
I was actually talking about suggesting going to the county and making a request that they consider that. Maybe Redoni could pick that ball up.
Great, Brett, any other uh slides here for questions?
Uh, yes, I I do have a couple more slides if that's okay.
Yep.
Right. So this is what I just mentioned in terms of the budget pressures. This is the way that kind of translated into the bottom line. And so you know, there's three columns here, you know, fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, that's this year, twenty-four, twenty-five becomes next year. And then the twenty-five, twenty-six is my really early guess at what happens, you know, the first year of the new budget cycle. So yeah, these are kind of the biggest items that are affecting us. Um, I, you know, there's revenues and expenses here. So if you kind of follow the logic, you know, to to the minus is 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 good, to the plus is bad in the sense here. So just skipping to the bottom line, then I'll kind of work my way back up the bottom line. This year, I think we're in a just about break even, you know, within, you know, a hundred thousand or so. And that's obviously a lot of And that's obviously a lot of other things that will be coming into place. Next year, we, I, you know, just the way I'm looking at it now, we may have a slight shortfall. But again, a million dollars is about, you know, one percent of our operating budget. So it's not a huge amount. And there's also some reserves in there. A lot, a lot can happen in the next year. And then budget, you know, i- if, if what's showing here is true, where our rate revenue kind of comes back in line by the third year, then we should break even again in, in the third year out. But kind of, they'll kind of go back up to the, the inputs here. You know, Sonoma County water purchases, even though the rates went up this year, we're at our very minimum take or pay and we budgeted for slightly more. And you may recall that we didn't get our full minimum last year due to the landslide. And so, you know, we'll be at the minimum this year or slightly over it. And so that'll have a slight savings. Next year, if we go back to where we budgeted to be in terms of purchases, you know, the, the rate increase of their ten percent will probably cause, you know, between a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand of an impact and that gets more and more over time if it continues. PG&E, again, is about a hundred thousand dollars this year. We had a six months worth of, of an impact from their rate increase. You know, as this rolls forward to the second and third year, that'll increase to the, you know, three hundred to four hundred thousand range. Salary savings, personnel costs there. This is a big year for us as we're kind of ramping up hiring. I expect that to come down in the sense of getting more fully staffed and filling our vacant positions. Benefit costs for pension and healthcare. This is what I was talking about with the Kaiser increases and the changes in the actuarial valuations for us. So the, the, the kind of short-term Kaiser increase is just fifteen or twenty thousand dollars this year and, you know, maybe thirty or forty next year. So not a huge number for us to have to absorb. It's the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the third year. That's when the actuaries come through and say, you need to fund your retirees at a higher level, you know, for the longer term. And so they give us a little bit of a lag. They just, we just got the report a couple of weeks ago. It doesn't take effect next year, but it takes effect in that second year. And so that'll be kind of, that's that first, you know, big one to follow. We can't avoid. We have to pay those, those costs. I'll be getting a report on our pension valuation in July. And so I'm hoping we'll have good news there because pension is much more driven by the stock market and less by health caring increases. So the stock market overall has been, you know, relatively healthy this year. And so I'm expecting CalPERS to have good news. And so hopefully that number may get, you know, brought down a little bit with some offsetting, good news from, from CalPERS. Rate revenue, this is what I talked about my last item. And I think we'll end the year, you know, around eight million dollars short from the budget, which is, is not a small number by any means. I think as we get into next year and the year after, we're hoping that, you know, kind of get back in line with what we expected on water sales. And so I'm assuming that number goes down in terms of the shortfall number goes down. It's a pretty big assumption, to be honest. I mean, it's, we're eight million dollars short this year, you know, expecting it to get better next year. And, you know, until I see otherwise, we, we would hope to get there by the third year, but this will be something I'll be reporting on, you know, obviously every month. And as we get into that budget cycle and, and we'll have to make adjustments as needed. Grants, this is just to prove, not to prove, but to kind of demonstrate that's a one-time gain to us from the COVID relief funds. A million and a half dollars this year, very much needed and it helps our customers as well. Can't, can't, we can't plan on that going forward. And then interest earnings down there, again, better than expected interest rates all year this year has really helped offset those rate revenue shortfalls. The way that LEAF works, though, that'll continue into next year, even if the Fed makes any cuts, we'll still kind of have this longer tail. But I would generally expect the Fed to make some cuts in the middle of this year and, and next year. So I would expect by that third year, we, we can't count on as much relief in terms of interest rate kind of windfall. So I just cut that in half to kind of demonstrate that that's going to be dwindling over time. So again, this is, you know, raw numbers. It's, it's kind of big picture items, but I just wanted the board and the public to be aware of. These are the things we're most looking at that most impact our budget. There's obviously, you know, hundreds of other line items that we have to work through and that'll be the work for us this fall. But this is kind of a, you know, ten thousand foot look at, you know, where I think we're going to be headed. Final slide here, future uncertainties. Again, you know, we, we have a lot still to see and a lot to work through for the budget. But rate revenue, overall demand, you know, inflation rates, both as an expenditure pressure for us. And as we're kind of, you know, trying to, to make our capital projects work. Interest rates, you know, both on the positive side for us for investment earnings and as well as how that affects us as we get into more discussions on bond financing for big projects in, in the future. Climate and rainfall, obviously, the biggest impact there for us is on our, how much we have to purchase from Sonoma in terms of supplemental water. Insurance rates were flat this year, which was great. I don't know if they'll be flat every year. But I think there, those are all, have been a big pressure recently. Pension costs I just mentioned, overall stock market and then healthcare costs. So a, a, a big laundry list here, but these again are the, the items we'll be watching for, for, for the big impacts on the budget into the next cycle. And that is it. Recap and next steps are, are budget, pre, pre, pre-approved or, you know, already approved budget increases by fifteen percent. That's really for kind of inflationary cost drivers, capital projects, deferred maintenance, water supply and reserves. But we do have the revenues in our, in our rate structure to support that. We, I'm not seeing any significant rate or budget adjustments needed at this time. But we will continue monitoring all the items I just mentioned. And then again, we'll start the budget process in early twenty-twenty-five with public discussion, board workshops in the spring. And the final budget considerations will come to your board in May and in June. Happy to take up any questions the board may have.
Terrific. When we go around the room, Matt, first name, any thoughts, questions?
No, no additional questions. Thank you for the thorough presentation as always.
Frungy.
Yeah, thanks. But great presentation. The, the difference in utility costs from what we had budgeted is striking. And when I look at all the factors that are going to be impacting the budget in a negative way, that's the largest. I guess it does raise questions about whether there's, you know, you know, those extra, you know, investing in, you know, renewables, alternatives to that, you know, that will make us less dependent on PG&E in the long run. At what point does that start to become economically a smart thing to do? And just, so just want to, you know, note that for all of us is, it's, it's quite striking, right? The difference between what we budgeted and what those rates actually are.
I'll be quick here because I know we're trying to get on to the employee recognition event. Just on that same line, and as we move toward electrification of our vehicle fleet, I think, you know, looking, doing a cost analysis of, you know, I don't know how much solar we currently have, but like, I wonder to what extent if our electrical demand is going to go up dramatically with our fleet, what our smart play is for reducing costs as in our, as we're purchasing more and more power from PG&E or our electrical sources. Thanks.
We're already dark green with MCE. So we're as, as green as you can get on the current system. The top of this building is covered with solar, three million dollars worth of it. There's a lot more that could be done with solar. The problem is it's only available in the daytime. Pumps run all twenty-four hours a day, so it's a little more tricky. There's no way to store the electricity. So it's a little complicated to fit our, even though you've heard the thing with Suluhuli that they can, we can run eight hundred horsepower, but we can't start it. So there's some issues there of how it fits with the kind of big inrush current that we have. It's good thinking. Rumbles I'm getting relatively small number, but are that we've already reached the point of no return on the reduction in water usage. So I think you should be very careful in assuming a rebound of much. I haven't, I've only heard that from a few people, but they're big water users. And so if they're feeling it, then, you know, and you'd ask a question about the relative ratios. Maybe you could bring up the list, not now, but the next time around of the tier fours. And it's complicated because of changing the tier structure, that, that whole dynamic could be changing. But that used to be the easy way to monitor was just watch the tier fours. There used to be like a thousand or twelve hundred of them and just see now they're, I think that number is going to go up and down at the same time. So people are going to be included in tier four, but then people are going to say, no, I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm going to watch my water usage. So I don't know what happens in the net, but that's the word I'm getting is a limited word at least that we've reached the point of impacting the cost, meaning that the growth in water usage probably won't happen.
Great. Thank you, Larry. Once again, Brett, thanks for the update. It seems to me like the two key variables in the short term are the summer rates. We did not have an increase in rates last year, so we're going to see the impact in response to June, July and August. That will, that will be very telling for how customers react and how our financials are impacted. The healthcare cost is a surprise. That seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit in year three and then going forward is significant. So I'd say we start planning for that, either through reserves or being careful. That, that is a big new number. I'm going to second Monty's comment on looking at solar. We have had a first and a second to have a presentation on solar opportunities twice before. So this is the third time that we're asking staff to come back to us and review what our solar options are and our existing solar capabilities and, and issues, et cetera. I think we actually asked it when there was a PG&E presentation almost a year ago, so we would like to elevate that. And also second Larry's comments on, on having a tier review after this season is done. I'd love to see how each of the different tiers have come in, both on revenues and number of customers. I have no other comments and I'll open it up for public comments on this item.
There are none.
Great. So we'll move on to upcoming meetings. And I know we have a finance and administration committee meeting and special meeting of the board planned for Thursday, August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.